The order, we staff the budget of the week. By the way, it is to the flag of the United States of America. It's good republic, which is sand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I encourage the tenants to take attention.
My council members are present, Mr. Mayor.
Action to approve the agenda. Entertaining motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
Well, they say I, or no, I'm sorry.
Avery.
Hi.
Duran.
I'm Neymar.
Hi.
Russellson.
Hi.
Specter.
I'm Chetton Burn.
I'm Wendell.
Hi. All right. Item board, twenty twenty four budget workshop number one. Let Paul take it from here.
Thank you, Mayor. City council members, every year, staff works diligently to put together a better bill budget. It's more transparent, sustainable. Uh, this year's budget team was led by Jake and Ashley. Jake is actually online with us via Zoom. Uh, the twenty twenty four budget is built through hundreds of staff hours, many of the department heads here before you tonight. They came tonight to answer any question, any question that council may have tonight. Um, and I'm very grateful for all the prioritized needs of this organization and community through the counter power of work putting this bunch together for you. Uh, the budget at its core is a balanced budget, which means, of course, expenditures will now oversee overrun revenues. That's a sustainable budget based on ten year operating capital projections. I don't know, most cities across the nation only with one year in advance. We're looking ten years in advance, making the recommendations we bring to you are sustainable. Uh, there's prioritization of many of these major projects within the budget presented to you tonight. And we are focusing on investing in our employees, our retention, recruitment, and training of them. The more, most importantly, works to achieve your strategic goals that you put forward here two years ago. With that, I'll turn it over to Jake to present the twenty twenty four budget to city council. And one recommendation I would make, because he is joining us via Zoom, maybe hold your questions towards the end. And then either he, I, or Ashley or the department will try to respond to the questions you might have. So Jake, with that, I'll go turn it over to you.
Good morning, everyone. I just want to check in that everyone can hear me all right?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, welcome to our first twenty twenty four budget workshop. Uh, the first thing we'll do here is just go over a little bit of our plan for the upcoming workshops. Uh, tonight's session will focus on an overview of the budget at a very high level. Uh, we'll talk about our operating budgets, which includes our general funds, special revenues, as well as enterprise funds. We'll look at our outside agency funding recommendations for twenty twenty four. And then we'll also talk about our ten year financial plan. September twenty sixth workshop will be dedicated to talking about the ten year capital improvement plan, as well as updates that are being proposed to the fee schedule. We hold the October tenth work session open and available uh for any recap and discussion as driven by city council and any other topics that we may want to address in a little bit more detail. As far as the formal adoption process goes for the budget, we've already had the first reading of the property tax levy ordinance on August twenty second. Second reading will be scheduled for tonight on September twelfth at the regular meeting. Uh, the reason we have to bring that forward before we get into the budget adoption process is that we still have to have that uh property tax levy certified by October first. But a change in state law a couple of years back allowed us to move our budget adoption process a little later into the year. That provided a benefit to staff to be able to look a little bit more deeper at our revenue as well as expenditure projections, as our goal is to always be as accurate as we can when we look at our forecasting trends. The first region reading of the budget ordinance itself is scheduled for October twenty fourth. And on November fourteenth, we will have the second reading of the budget ordinance, as well as the adoption of the ten year capital improvement plan and the adoption of the consolidated fee schedule, which are done by simple motion. Before you hear is the agenda for tonight's session. We'll talk about the twenty twenty four budget at a very high level. Uh, we'll look at a budget comparison between twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. We'll analyze your primary revenue sources, get into the overview of the general fund, the special revenue funds, and the enterprise funds. Talk about that long term ten year general fund projection, get into the twenty twenty four outside agency recommendations, and then wrap up, as Paul mentioned, with some opportunity for questions and feedback. We always like to include this slide. As Paul had mentioned, we always consider city councils five focus areas as we're going through our budget meetings as the budget process. We use those as our guide, uh, which are included as part of the city council strategic plan. While many often hear the budget as a conglomination of a lot of numbers, uh, and three hundred page document, we always try to remember that this budget ultimately serves as a policy tool, an operations guide, a financial plan, and a communications device. Really, it's the budget that provides the funding that funds all the services, initiative projects, and programs that we're able to provide for the city on a year over year basis. Highlights for the twenty twenty four budget include, as Paul mentioned, a balanced budget. This means that our revenues coming in will align with our expenditures going out. We're always trying to utilize best practices and make sure that we're aligning ongoing revenues with ongoing expenditures, and we're not having to dip into reserves to fund our ongoing operation. We will be budgeting for positive sales tax growth this upcoming year. Specifically, we'll be using two point two percent growth from our twenty twenty three estimated budget. And this number was gathered by looking at the Congressional Budget Office recommendation for twenty twenty four. Also, as Paul had mentioned, this is a personnel focused budget. Uh, realizing the labor market we're in, we're putting an emphasis on the retention, recruitment, and training of our staff, realizing that they are our greatest asset within the community. The budget itself, both in terms of this presentation, as well as the book that will eventually be produced, uh, isn't meant to be intuitive. We want it to make sense for city council, but we also want it to make sense for any member of the public who views it uh and have them be able to take something away from it and truly understand what we're utilizing in our operations. As Paul mentioned, this budget is sustainable, our revenues and expenditures are balanced, and we're setting ourselves up with a long term orientation. I also want to mention that while this budget is personnel focused, we're not proposing to increase any personnel numbers for twenty twenty four. We're going to hold our staffing numbers flat. Uh, this is really focused on retaining the employees that we do have, as well as filling any open positions as they become available. The first item for you here in terms of the total budget is looking at our total budget comparison year over year. As you will see, the total twenty twenty four budget is proposed for seventy point two million dollars or an eight point four million or thirteen point seven percent increase from the twenty twenty three budget. Uh, the increase is primarily driven by your enterprise funds, which account for about six point two million of that increase. And this is driven by large projects at the landfill, the airport, as well as the golf course, and we'll get into those in a little bit more detail later in the presentation. As a reminder, the general fund is your primary operating fund. This includes your public safety, like police, fire, public works, as well as parks, recreation, and forestry. You'll notice that your capital improvement plan funding is projected to decrease by one point two million from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. And this is driven by the completing of the next phase of Twenty Second Avenue, which we're hoping will wrap up here relatively soon. Twenty Second Avenue is funded by state share of revenues, and the segment is done approximately every four years as we're able to save up those revenues and pay for that uh next segment of the project. The percentages shown within this graph represent the total of the total budget each fund accounts for. So for example, in twenty twenty four, your general fund at twenty one point one million, twenty one point two million accounts for thirty percent of your total seventy million dollar budget. The next item we have is we'll look at our total or look at your revenue sources at a high level. Your primary ones being sales tax, property tax, bed, booze, and board, which is also known as the triple B or three B tax, as well as the business improvement district bid or pillow tax, and that's the two dollars per night that's charged on hotel stays. As we look at our sales tax trend line and growth assumptions, I want to give credit to Ashley and our finance team. They do a tremendous job of looking at our revenue assumptions and really monitoring this on a daily, weekly, monthly basis to make sure that we're utilizing the most accurate uh information that we have available. I will take a second to explain the growth assumptions as they'll be fairly consistent for all of our revenue sources. So the twenty twenty three estimate that you see is calculated by taking in a two percent on top of your twenty twenty two actual. So that twenty three estimate assumes two percent growth from what we actually received in sales tax in twenty twenty two. And then the twenty twenty four requested is two point two percent on top of that twenty twenty three estimate. And again, that two point two percent does come from the Congressional Budget Office as what's to be expected for twenty twenty four. An additional wrinkle that you'll see in here is that we're accounting for additional sales tax growth from Brookings Municipal Utilities on their water treatment facility. This sales tax revenue is being balanced by a corresponding decrease in the BMU transfer that we'll see later in the presentation. As a reminder, sales tax is comprised of both first penny and second penny. First penny goes to your general fund to fund operations. Second penny goes to your capital improvement plan. Because we're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars total from BUMU and sales tax, half of that or three hundred and seventy five thousand will go to the general fund, the other half, the additional three hundred and seventy five thousand will go to your CIP. We do plan to make that transfer uh throughout the course of the year and as those funds are recognized to bring all of that money back into the general fund, which is where the BMU transfer typically hits on an annual basis. Next up, we'll cover property tax. Property tax is a formula driven revenue source, and it's your most stable revenue source. If you look at the difference between our growth and CPI factor, we expect property tax to increase by about a hundred and eighty thousand from twenty twenty three. As I mentioned, this is formula driven. Uh, CPI is a number that is given to us by the state uh working closely with Brookings County Finance, and growth takes into account new construction within the community. One of the things I'll draw attention to on this side is that due to state law, our CPI is capped at actual CPI or three percent, whichever is less. Uh, as you know, uh, we've been in a series or a few years of high inflation here as of recently. Uh, so our actual CPI has outpaced that three percent. Uh, between twenty one and twenty twenty two, we've actually left about six point seven percent on the table uh just due to being capped at that three percent number. Uh, if we were to take that additional increase, we'd be looking at about two hundred and fifty thousand additional revenue through property tax in those years. And that would fund conservatively about three additional staff positions for the city. Again, uh, there's nothing that we can necessarily do about this, but we do like to point that out uh just because we are capped by state law, and this does impact the amount of revenue that we're able to bring in uh on an annual basis. Brookings does have one of the lowest municipal tax mill rates by municipality. Uh, as you'll notice in a number of our peer communities, our mill rate is uh one of the lowest in the entire state. Uh, Spearfish has been a little bit higher than us, but their valuations have been increasing pretty significantly. Uh, so by way of that, they've actually uh have a little bit lower mill rate than us at this time. Uh, Watertown has been lower than us as well. Uh, but again, you look at our peer communities and other university town like Vermillion, they're at about five and a half, uh, which is over double we are. Uh, we look at Aberdeen around that same range. So at the municipal level, uh, Brookings does have one of the lowest tax mill rates by municipality. But the city's portion of the property tax only accounts for a pretty small percentage of the total sale or property tax revenue. Uh, as a reminder, most of your property tax goes to the public schools as well as the county. Uh, we like to include this graphic every year so residents know uh where their property taxes are going. So if you take an average home valued at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars within the community, about sixty percent of that or thirty three hundred dollars is going to go to the public school system. Another twenty six percent of that or just about fifteen hundred will go to the county, and the smallest portion of that of the big three, which is the city, will get about fifteen percent of that, and under nine hundred dollars per year will come to us. And that goes to our general fund, and that funds the community services like public safety, police, fire, public works, parks, recreation, and forestry, which are many of the amenities that residents rely on heavily within the community. Next up, we'll talk quickly about the triple B. This again stands for bed, booze, and board. This is uh your revenue source that is an additional one percent on those items. And the triple B primarily funds economic development agencies and drivers like the Brookings Economic Development Corporation, Visit Brookings, the Chamber of Commerce, Dakota Bank Center, and the Research Park. Uh, the three B is based on the same growth considerations that we discussed in sales tax. Uh, we're looking at the twenty twenty three estimate, which is calculated by two percent on top of our twenty twenty two actual. Uh, and then the twenty twenty four requested is based on two point two percent growth from that twenty twenty three estimate. We do want to note here that we have been continuing to work with the state for a resolution on a fifty thousand dollar delinquency, which does impact our estimates here. The state has not been, has not provided a timeframe for this to be resolved. Again, this occurred in fourth quarter of twenty twenty two. We're hopeful that it'll be resolved by the end of the year, and Ashley and finance do continue to work diligently with the state to bring resolution to that. But again, at this time, we don't have uh an exact timeframe on when we will see that resolution. The pillow tax or the bid tax, again, this is your two dollars per night charge on a hotel stay. Uh, same growth assumptions that we have used in the previous revenue sources. Uh, two point two percent growth on top of the twenty twenty four estimate. So we do estimate that we'll bring in about two hundred and eighty one thousand in pillow tax revenue for twenty twenty four. This one's a little bit unique, because if you'll look into the final adopted budget book, uh, the number that will actually be there for an estimate is about five hundred thousand dollars. And the reason for that is we are only allowed to capture as much revenue as we budget for. So if we were to budget for two hundred and fifty thousand and we bring in two eighty, we wouldn't get the full two eighty, we would be capped at two fifty. So we always budget high, uh, just in case if we were to have any new hotels come online or um there was something unforeseen. We just want to make sure that we're leaving none of that revenue on the table. But when it comes to our expenditures, we utilize what we actually anticipate to bring in, so we're not budgeting uh equal revenue to expenditure. We'll focus a little bit more in detail on the general fund in the coming slides. As a reminder, uh, the general fund is your primary operating fund. Um, it balances this year at just over twenty one million dollars. On the expenditure side, public safety, which includes police, fire, public works, and parks, recreation, and forestry account for about seventy four percent of your total general fund expenditures. On the revenue side, sales tax, property tax, and transfers accounted for about eighty two percent of your total revenues. This slide talks about some of the changes that we're looking at and projects and initiatives within the twenty twenty four general fund budget. Uh, one of the things we're looking at as we talk about recruitment and retention of staff is the implementation of the updated salary survey results to ensure that we're highly competitive within the marketplace among peer communities, both within South Dakota as well as college towns within the regional Midwest. One of the things that we've done that will have a budget neutral impact is we've created a streamlined cost center for the activity center. Uh, the activity center, which is now under uh more direct city management by having a uh full time employee there, uh, used to be accounted for within the recreation budget. But as we look at the programming, as well as some of the revenues that that uh cost center will bring in, we're opting to break that out of the recreation budget and have it stand alone as its own budget, so we can better track the revenues and expenditures that are hitting that cost center. A similar budget neutral change for twenty twenty four being proposed is moving all departmental preventive maintenance under the general government buildings budget, which is account four seventeen. The reason for this is our facility manager and chief building official Jared Thomas has really taken a lead and spearheaded managing our annual preventive maintenance contracts for our heating and cooling systems. And as opposed to budgeting those out of the individual um budgets such as the library or the police department, which are all general fund, uh, moving that into one cost center allows Jared better to manage that and be able to manage those contracts and ultimately take advantage of economies of scale as he looks with uh contracting with one vendor for multiple services. As we also mentioned earlier, this does take into account additional employee investment. Uh, we're looking at training opportunities, uh, enhanced training opportunities for parks and public works, as well as continuing our tuition reimbursement uh program organization wide, as well as several other training initiatives for this upcoming year. Couple of specific equipment purchases planned for twenty twenty four that come out of the general fund, uh, general fund budget are six speedboards for the police department to be able to better monitor um speeds around town and ensure safety throughout the community. Uh, we're also looking at a turf tank for robotic line striping within the parks and recreation budget. This uh piece of equipment will primarily be used at the fishback soccer complex, and it works through GPS technology as well as geo fencing. Whereas it used to take three employees uh to uh stripe the fields for the first time every year, this will allow them to be able to fill that up with uh the paint and let it run on its own. We're also looking at a generator enhancement project for the city county government center. Uh, the generator that currently serves the city county government center was put in after the fact of building construction. And while the staff at the time did the best they could to tie in essential services and um uh electrical needs into that piece of equipment, uh, there are some deficiencies that we've found through various emergency events. By providing a new generator that runs everything within the, within the building, we'll be able to ensure that the elevators are functional during emergency weather events, which is critical as we have the emergency storm shelter in the basement, and we want to make sure that we have access for any of those with uh any walking disabilities or anything of that nature. It will also allow us to have an emergency management facility in this building. Um, if we have power outages, as the lights will stay on, we'll be able to maintain uh power, hopefully internet, as well as other services and operate within that facility. This slide gets into a little bit more detail into your uh general fund revenue sources and shows the growth between the twenty twenty four requested and the twenty twenty three adopted. Uh, one thing I want to point out is these percentages might look a little bit larger. In the previous slide, we were showing uh the growth based on the twenty twenty three estimated revenue. So essentially where we think we'll end the year in twenty twenty three based on financial projections. What this slide is showing here is the growth between the twenty four requested and the twenty three adopted, which as we budget conservatively, we typically see our revenues outpace our estimates as we utilize those conservative budgeting practices. Uh, when we look at the larger increase in the sales tax revenue at nearly thirteen and a half percent, I do also want to remind everyone, this does include the additional sales tax planned from the BMU water treatment project. Your transfers, which are increasing by about five percent, equals three point six million dollars. Uh, this includes uh transfers from the Brookings Municipal Utilities at about one point nine million, the liquor store at about three hundred ninety thousand, as well as the landfill at a little over three hundred thousand as well. Your departmental revenues, uh, they account for about one point six million dollars of revenue on an annual basis. Those include things like permit fees, fines and forfeitures, and um fees charged at the pool as well as other recreation facilities. The other category that accounts for about one point five million dollars, that's primarily driven by your liquor override account. Um, that is where we charge that additional markup on the liquor that's sold within the community. We're also projecting strong growth in our money market interest income. Uh, due to wise financial decisions by staff in the finance department, as well as the general increase that we've seen in interest rates, our money market interest income is anticipated to be about three hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty four, when typically we're in the tens of thousands. So we've seen significant growth, which is driving that twenty six and a half percent number you're seeing there. Lastly, our uh six and a half percent increase comes from intergovernmental funds, and this comes from various state and county shared revenue sources that come into the city. Now that we've covered the revenue sources for the general fund, we'll go quickly into the expenditures. I won't touch on all the expenditure increases in great detail as they're primarily driven uh by uh themes throughout the general fund. The increases that we're seeing are generally attributed to personnel expenses, insurance, inflation, as well as projects such as the generator. The public works department, which is showing the largest increase within the general fund, that does include that generator project, which is about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar project, which does account for some of that larger increase that we're seeing. Also expenses related to vehicle maintenance, generalized inflation. Uh, similar story with the police department, uh, that also does include the speed boards that we mentioned, as well as some other smaller uh projects like updated vests, as well as some office equipment and furniture. Um, one of the things I will point out as we look in here, you'll see that the nondepartmental expense is showing a pretty large increase at fifty percent, albeit a pretty small budgetary number in the grand scheme. The uh reason for that increase is due to an increase in our contingency fund. Uh, we're typically looking at a contingency fund of about a four hundred or about a hundred thousand dollars per year. Um, but we are a little bit higher than that this upcoming year, and that's primarily due to a one time reimbursement to the general fund from a tax increment financing district, and that's coming in at about three hundred thousand. So the total contingency budget for twenty twenty four is at four hundred and twenty two thousand, and about three hundred of that is a one time payment from a tax increment financing district. And really, when we look at our general fund, we try to align ongoing revenues with ongoing expenditures. And as that's a one time revenue source, uh, contingency was the best place to place it at this time uh to maintain that flexibility. This slide speaks to the long term sustainability of the financial decisions that we're making today. As you'll see, there's some ebb and flow between twenty twenty and twenty twenty two. A lot of that was driven by federal legislation and federal funds that came in due to COVID, uh, as well as our impacts from the derecho. Uh, due to the derecho in twenty two, we did have a number of insurance claims that we were able to make that did drive up our revenue sources or our revenue sources those funds came in. It also drove up our expenditures as there were improvements that we needed to make to our facilities as a result of damage sustained during the derecho. As you'll see in twenty twenty three and going through twenty thirty three, we're very closely aligning our revenues as well as our expenditures, and in fact, showing a great story here in that our revenues are just slightly outpacing our expenditures. Uh, this shows that the staff and the decisions we're making are sustainable for the future, and that as we're accounting for uh reoccurring growth in our revenue sources, as well as projecting our expenditure choi- expenditure trends, we're seeing that they are a very close alignment with revenues slightly outpacing them. And with that, leave the general fund, and now we'll get into the special revenue funds as well as the enterprise funds. Uh, as we look at the special revenue fund, one of the comments I'll make here is that really these are driven uh by a combination of timing and projects. So as you'll see in twenty twenty four, uh, we're requesting about ten point three million dollars, ten point four million dollars in total budget across the special revenue and debt service expenditures. That's up about a million dollars, one point three million from twenty twenty three. If we were to look back from twenty twenty one to the twenty twenty four requested, that total budget varies anywhere from eight point seven million in twenty two to a high of twelve million in twenty twenty one. So when we look at that ten point four million, we are right in line with an ongoing uh four to five year trend there that we would expect to see. And again, I just want to reiterate, a lot of this is driven by special projects as well as timing. One of the notable changes you'll see first is the Dakota Bank Center, which is the D B C acronym. This is showing a pretty large increase of fifty six point six six percent. Uh, this is not due to that large of an increase in the expenditures at the facility. The reason for this is really an accounting metric. Uh, what we had found uh in managing the facility is that they were budgeting a a net number, uh, which they were basically, if they were having an event, they would take their revenues and their expenditures, they would net those out, and that's what would show up within the budget. Uh, from the city's perspective and all of our other accounts, we look at gross numbers, so we look at the gross revenue as well as the gross expenditure. And what this does is it treats the Dakota Bank Center or manages it in a similar fashion to all of our other accounts. The key number here is what the annual subsidy is for the Dakota Bank Center from the city. Uh, and our planned and requested subsidy for twenty twenty four is at two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. This is down significantly from previous years. We had reached a high of about a half a million dollars back in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Uh, we credit a lot of that decrease to uh Mike and the chat, that Mike and the team at Oakview Group has done within the facility. As you see, the decrease in TIF funds, that's really due to the timing of funds, as well as we have, as well as we evaluate strategies for TIF numbers seven and eleven. Storm drainage is down due to the ebb and flow of projects primarily in Twenty Second Avenue. While folks mostly view Twenty Second Avenue as a street project, there is also a significant investment within the stormwater improvements that go into that project as well. E nine one one increase is driven primarily by personnel. The three B increase or bed, booze, and board expenditure increases are driven primarily by the downtown Brookings funding. Uh, downtown Brookings is standing up again as a standalone organization, and they've coordinated a three year implementation or startup plan with the city that does require a little bit heavier investment in those earlier years as they are reestablishing themselves. The special assessment fund uh is down, just as we're expecting less projects in the upcoming year. Uh, pillow tax is driven primarily by strong revenue estimates. Uh, the public art contribution has increased due to change in city council policy. Uh, what this does is it accounts for vehicle and equipment purchases that aren't financed by a lease, a loan, or special revenue source or outside revenue source. So we are including, including a lot more of our vehicle and equipment purchases as an eligible expense that's counting towards that public art expense. And as a reminder, that public art expense is calculated by one percent of qualified expenses within the capital improvement plan. A library donations and fees are flat within this. Next, we'll get into a little bit more detail on our enterprise funds. Solid waste, liquor, and the research and technology center are structured to be self sustaining. The golf course and the airport do require subsidies. The golf course gets a hundred thousand dollars from the liquor store as an operating subsidy. It also gets nine hundred and thirty thousand from the capital improvement plan for capital purchases. Of that nine hundred and thirty thousand from the CIP for the golf course, a large portion, or about eight hundred thousand, is budgeted to address the long term needs for golf course water source improvements. The airport receives a subsidy of two hundred and forty three thousand for operations from the landfill, and it receives an additional one hundred and twenty seven thousand from the capital improvement plan for capital projects. The enterprise fund expenditures, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, are increasing by about six point two million from twenty twenty three. And this change is due to large projects. We're looking at a three million dollar increase at the landfill, which is driven by leachate system improvements, equipment, as well as equipment storage, and some small uh paving projects as well. The airport, which is up by about two million dollars from twenty twenty three, is due to a large taxiway project. But of that two million dollars, only that one hundred and twenty seven thousand is the responsibility of the city. The remainder of that comes from state and federal revenue sources. And the golf course is up about eight hundred thousand, and again, that correlates directly to the planned golf course water source improvements that are being funded by the capital improvement plan. Collections, uh, they're using reserves to fund a collection truck replacements, as well as a storage area for carts and small heating and cooling, as well as lighting improvements. In the liquor store, you'll see that there is a hundred thousand dollars from contributed capital, and that ties into the local scholarship program that was started by city council a couple of years back. And we'll again touch on this in a little bit more detail in our coming slides on outside agency funding. As we get into outside agency funding, uh, I just want to provide a reminder that the United Way will be coming back in October, November to set the priorities with city council for the social service agency funding, also known as the United Way Funding Process. Those funding decisions for those social service agencies, those will occur in January or February of twenty twenty-four, so early next year. Uh, this slide here shows the funding recommendations for the general fund outside agencies. Uh, one of the notes we do want to make is that the Brookings School District did submit their application late, and according to city council policy, they should not receive funding. Uh, as staff, we are still recommending to uh fund them at the hundred ninety-five thousand for twenty twenty-four, but ultimately that will be a decision uh for council to consider and make during the budget process. Uh, the Humane Society, we are re- uh requesting and recommending to increase the overall cap of their contract from forty thousand dollars per year to fifty thousand. This would still be a formula-driven number based on the uh service that they provide to the community, and mostly looking at the number of animals and such that they are taking on our behalf. Community band and the Arts Council fu- council funding is consistent with previous years. We are not recommending to fund the swim club in twenty twenty-four. Uh, decision was made several years ago to stop funding those local sports clubs. Uh, the swim club does pay the city about six thousand dollars for fees on an annual basis, primarily for uh being able to offer swim lessons, as well as some of the different athletic events that they host. We are recommending funding to the Big Sioux Water Festival. This won't come from the general fund, though. This will come from the Storm Drainage Fund. Uh, reason for this is that their annual event does help with the city's stormwater permit, and this is a one-day event that's held in May on the S D S U campus. The Humanities Council is for the Festival of Books, which will be held in Brookings again in twenty twenty-four. That comes here on an every even year basis, and we're looking forward to hosting that event again within our community. The social service agency funding is being recommended to increase by two point two percent from twenty twenty-three, and then there's also five thousand dollars within that number for the United Way. That primarily covers their software expenses that they utilize to process the applications as they receive them, and does account for a small administrative fee as their staff is putting significant time and effort into uh the recommendations that they bring forward to city council. City council did pass a policy, uh, an updated policy that called for the maximum allocation to general fund outside agencies to be equal to fourteen percent of the property tax levy. Uh, when we exclude the thousand dollars for the Br- Big Sioux Water Festival, this budget does recommend an allocation from the general fund to outside agencies of five hundred and fifty-nine thousand and thirty-five dollars, which is thirteen point nine nine eight percent, which is point oh oh two percent less than the cap, also known as eighty-seven dollars uh remaining. Next slide we have, and final slide before questions, is the recommended outside agency funding for um economic development agencies and really sources other than the general fund coming from your bed booths and board, your C I P, as well as your business improvement district. Generally, across the board, we are recommending to provide the amount of funding requested to outside agencies as they've submitted. Uh, do you want to note here as an asterisk that Brookings Economic Development Corporation did submit their funding application as well as their annual report after both deadlines? Uh, similar just similar situation to the Brookings School District. According to city council policy, they should not be eligible for funding. As staff, we did include uh their funding as a recommendation here, uh, but ultimately that will be a decision for council to consider uh during the budget process as we move forward. Uh, we are recommending additional funds for Visit Brookings, uh, about thirty thousand there, and this is a support, a community ambassador program. And this supports an initiative directly from the Economic Development Master Plan. Uh, we've heard wonderful things about this program from peer South Dakota communities. I know this is a program that uh Visit Brookings would be excited to have the opportunity to implement uh within twenty twenty-four. We are also recommending a ten thousand dollar increase from the Chamber of Commerce to support initiatives specified in the Economic Development Master Plan. This would specifically target uh Connected Brookings, which focuses on S D S U, new residents, as well as young professionals, as well as a small business support program. We are uh utilizing some reserves from the triple B to fund the downtown Brookings organization as it implements their three-year startup plan, as was previously mentioned within the presentation. The visitor promotion funding of twenty-five thousand dollars with their estimated reserves puts them at their desired funding level of about fifty thousand dollars per year. Uh, we've had those conversations with their representative. Uh, we do get that estimate from them on an annual basis, and again, do bring forward a recommendation that tries to align them with that annual desired funding level of fifty thousand. You will also notice that we do have the local scholarship fund uh in here again as a recommended funding initiative. Uh, of that one hundred thousand, eighty thousand dollars would be geared towards uh South Dakota State University, and twenty thousand dollars would go to South Dakota Technical Colleges. Uh, you'll also see within this budget, we do have uh pavements to the S D S U uh Performing Arts Center Phase Two, as well as payment to the Brookings Health System, and those are for uh can, those are for um capital purchases and capital projects that had previously been committed to via city council resolution. And with that, I would be happy to go to the next slide, which is questions and feedback.
Councilmember, any questions, comments? Councilmember Wendell.
Thank you, Mayor. This may be a question for Jake, or maybe Paul is better positioned to talk about this, but you referenced the B M U transfer agreement on slide nine, uh, and again on slide seventeen, their large water treatment project. Could you talk a little bit about the nature of our transfer agreement with B M U? Is it based on a dollar amount, or is there an equation? What's our annual typical agreement with that a large project, people?
Yeah, so with the B M U, they generally transfer right around two point five million dollars, and Ash and Jake can clarify this. Annually, of the board has agreed to increase that dollar, that amount, fifty thousand dollars a year. Um, but we still overall see an increase in the rates. I think this year overall, B M U's increasing water rate roughly ten percent. Um, and then of course, electric rates sort of things increase as well. So um, we appreciate the money that the B M U gives us, but ultimately, a lot of that money is returned back to B M U uh for water rates, electric rates, sewer rates as well, close to about a million dollars, whatever you remember. There's also a fee for fire hydrants as well, uh, three hundred thousand dollars, uh, right within that realm. Uh, B M U came to us and advised us uh that they will be reducing their overall transfer uh at the same amount that they would traditionally have to pay for their tax because they were annexed into the city. And that tax equation was about three hundred fifty thousand dollars over the course of two years. So though your your sales tax is increasing this year, it's increasing right now at a rate of about uh eight percent year over year, uh, twelve percent for the month. Uh, part of that increase is due to uh the cost of, or the the construction uh revenue coming from from that water plant. So therefore, they're asking, are they, they are reducing their overall transfer to us? Uh, and Ashley will be uh assuring that the the receipts received from that uh project will match up with that amount that they're to be reducing our our overall transfer. Does that answer your question, Councilmember?
It does, and I I just feel like it's an area where maybe we'd all benefit from having a deeper understanding of the nature of that relationship, and I don't know if there's room or appetite to visit about that or consider what a negotiation would look like, but it feels like there's room to revisit that from a council perspective. Sounds like there's multiple factors that maybe aren't being considered on a manual basis.
Yeah, if that's an interest of the council, we can definitely revisit that with B M U. I would be, I would be in favor of that.
Can I ask a couple others? Can you remind me, I think we've talked about this before, and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity when the outside agencies, especially economic development agencies are with us, but I wanted to um, think about this before they're with us. If I remember correctly, there is some type of statutory requirement for the dollar amount that we have to provide to an organization like Visit Brookings on an annual basis. I know it's less than the dollar amount reflected in the recommendation, but what are we required to provide?
Uh, to Visit Brookings, I don't believe you're required to provide any funding. Um, there is a bid, Business Improvement District, that was created for that two dollars per night. Now, they do provide a recommendation to city council, and ultimately uh it's proven upon to to follow that recommendation. Their recommendation is to fund, and Mike might be able to correct me on this one, is to fund uh the Visit uh Brookings account with uh the the revenues, which is roughly two hundred fifty thousand dollars, two hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollars. Uh, that doesn't fulfill all their needs. Uh, their total budget, I believe, is probably to five hundred thousand. That is an offset by three B, but so there's not a statutory requirement. There is just a recommendation by the bid board. In my, would you say that's correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and um with the bid board, there's statutory requirements and how those funds can be spent. And so, um, there's about eight to ten different areas, and they chose to help fund this um visit for H because they're trying to grow that industry.
Now, three B uh does also have statutory requirements. Uh, that brings in roughly nine hundred to million dollars a year. Those requirements can only, or that funds can only be utilized for marketing and development endeavors. We'll see if you can can help articulate what that means. To the state, you could use them for park uh amenities, park improvements, um, the operations that meet that core requirement of economic development, marketing, or quality of life.
Yeah, a broad range of uh of uh purposes that promote the city, which is really within the discretion of the council as to what promotes the city.
Thank you. Is the, is that bid board recommendation piece that I was coinciding with the statutory requirements? So thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Specter.
We've had some of these outside agencies sort of repeatedly file things late, and the council, the city don't seem to do much about it. And it's, when people are asking for a fair amount of money, and we're just asking for a deadline on an, on either a progress report or a budget, it seems like we should be getting it on time. I mean, everybody else has to do things on time. And I think it might be worth considering sort of penalizing them to, like a some small amount, just so that they know, like, have it maybe increase annually if they still don't submit it on time, rather than saying we're not going to fund you at all, or funding them for everything they ask. Make it sort of an incremental penalty. A late P.
Pretty much. Any recommendation on on an amount at the, at this time?
Um, I mean, it could be a flat amount. It could be five thousand. It could be a percent of what their request is. You know, that that might actually make more sense when you've got some of these smaller organizations that five thousand is a big chunk of what they're asking. Um, so maybe like the five percent penalty.
Councilmember Durin, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as mentioned on slide sixteen about additional employee development investment, I just had a a kind of a clarifying question with that. Um, so either Jake or Paul. This, so as we look at employee retention, would this allow uh more training or more employees to unlock that training, or would it be higher quality training, you know, maybe look at national, or is it the new strategy in retention, or just some more context around?
Yeah, it's a great, great question. It's a little bit of everything. If they can bring that up, spoke to, talk more about this. All our employees, full-time employees, have the ability to go back to uh college, whether that be to attain a two-year degree, four-year degree certificate, something that's within their area of expertise. Um, so every full-time employee had that opportunity, and we've had more and more employees take advantage of that, and that effort is to ensure that we have leadership in place for when others retire, decide to leave this organization, that we're constantly backfilling with with great new talent and and people that are willing to fill those positions. So that's just one component. Other areas include looking at how we can ensure longevity of our employees. So it's a work in a different programs on how we can retain and keep those employees. Some of that also is looking at what we're paying as well. Uh, so we did an analysis. We do this every three years. We look at fourteen peer uh communities across the Midwest for comparability to understand where we sit within that market. And then finally, we are looking at national training, training for all of our employees and departments. We have efforts, for example, the police department become clear training. We have efforts within the parks department become um nationally accredited park staff members, which is something we've never had before, to ensure that we'll be in all aspects of parks and and amenities and programs for our, for our citizens. Um, and so that reaches the limit of all departments, but also we're looking at high-performance operating training for our, our organization as well, which will start taking place this year, transitioned next year as well. So it's a lot more investment to our employees. We believe that'll pay dividends, not only in the near future, but for the foreseeable future for this community.
Um, follow-up to that, you said that uh tuition reimbursement and the training is for a full-time. Are we doing professional development for a part-time or any opportunities for those part-time employees, or is that more pay?
Uh, there, there is some opportunities for part-time. Right now, we choose to focus primarily on full-timers. It um basically because we we lacked in those areas altogether. Uh, but there are some opportunities for part-timers as well. I believe, uh, in Casey, uh, is he here? Uh, do you recall the tuition reimbursement? Do we allow that for the part-timers as well?
Did you, you have part-time employees get uh fifty percent of that benefit, so when they start, they start going involved.
And so there, there is also some additional training as well, but not to the level we provide to full-timers.
Thank you.
Uh, one thing if I may add to that, um, and I'll, I'll give credit specifically to a couple individuals, even though this is widespread in the organization, but uh John, Jeremy in Public Works, as well as Don in I T, they're also really focusing training for their employees for specific certifications uh that are from national organizations specializing in best practices, and that really builds the specific skill sets and allows folks to uh advance within the profession, and as they receive those certifications, they're re- uh receiving a higher level of competency, which also builds the overall um effectiveness of our organization.
Councilmember Kildare.
Um, my question is around the dollar amount um allotted for the Humane Society. Um, I, I noticed that you'd mentioned that that is built on a formula. Um, and I'm wondering if we should perhaps entertain the idea of rather than making it a formula-driven dollar amount, just a flat rate, um, knowing that um we don't, we don't necessarily have a formula for some of these other organizations, um, and also knowing the service that they provide to our community um to allow them uh better opportunity to um budget, and then also perhaps to remove some of the administrative aspect that goes along with tracking that. Um, I would suggest that we perhaps look at moving that just to a flat rate rather than formula-driven.
I would recommend, counsel, keeping at least some type of metric there. A lot of your outside agencies, economic development, for example, they're providing, I would say somewhat of a service for you, right? Economic development. And we're moving more to metric-driven to assure that they're meeting those metrics to attain those dollars. So though, uh, if you want to move from the formula, I would still recognize the tougher metrics. Now, um, within the budget process, if you are agreeable with fifty thousand dollars, I'd recommend improving that in the budget process. That agreement will come back to you guys, I believe, sometime in December, and that's where we can rework rather than the formula, go into metrics to achieve those dollar amounts.
And um I, I would obviously support looking at metrics and making sure that we're tracking that. I would support that for all of the a- agencies that receive funding, um, from us, just like any contractor, any, any, anybody that we were hired to do anything. Um, obviously, there's a certain metrics or or a certain expectation in that. Another question I have related to the Humane Society funding is, um, I'm, I'm curious about uh with the cap being fourteen percent for outside agencies. Um, given the fact that the Humane Society is a contract for a specific service that our police department previously been providing to the community, it, it seems to me that that agreement is a little bit different um than maybe some of these other outside agencies and more liking contracts that we have in place, and I'm just wondering if if that should be considered differently than um uh some of this outside agency funding and maybe allocated through a different avenue or looked at in a different way than having it be like an outside agency um uh annual thing that we revisit, just knowing that that I, I think that we have other examples that we could look at that are similar, contract services that aren't part of outside agency funding.
If, if we look at that uh funding source, you know, the Humane Society does provide some resources for the police department uh for animal control, holding those animals, but they also go above and beyond. And so it's kind of a hybrid, if you will. And so it doesn't quite fit into the traditional services that they provide, because they do provide somewhat of a service, but then they also go above and beyond, and so they are kind of a mixture of both. but then they also go above and beyond. And so they are kind of a mixture of both. And so it is very difficult to, to put them in one pool, if you will. But I think uh, what we can do is achieve most of what you're talking about through addressing the contract as long as you're um, willing to uh, move forward and increase the fifty thousand dollars.
Councilmember Wendell.
I, I have one other note slash question. I say this is, I think I know the answer, but I think it'd be helpful for us to talk about now because of the timing of, of this. I seem to recall a couple of years ago, we discussed some challenges we had in terms of the way we receive information from the state on um, tax generation and that it would be useful from a city perspective, we had an ability to understand like within a month, you know, a, a better idea of like the timing of certain revenues. And because a considerable portion of this budget we're looking at tonight is driven by things like three B, sales tax and pillow tax. It's not all that easy for us to determine like which weekend uh, drove a tax increase or what activity in our community actually drove uh, tax increases or decreases. I seem to recall a conversation where we were going to encourage the South Dakota Municipal League to consider legislation that might require the state to provide municipalities, maybe a within a month, a week-by-week breakdown or a different type of breakdown. Is that conversation still happening? And the reason I pose it now is because if it were to happen in the next legislative session, we'd need to get the gears turning now. And maybe we're the only city with an interest, but I, I'm just curious if that's been chattering out there.
No, there, there's many first-class cities that have a lot of interest in this. And the League of Municipalities have put it on their priority for taxation. And so it is an effort that they would like to pursue. Uh, the narrative that we often receive from the state is that they're just not effective to give us that information. And here are some of the frustrations that we do have as a city. Uh, three B, for example, roughly last year in November, back in twenty twenty-two, we received uh, um, thanks to our staff who caught it, a decrease in our overall three B funds, close to, I believe, fifty thousand dollars. We had no idea, the state didn't inform us. Luckily, staff caught this, asked the state, the state, what, what occurred here? And they said, yeah, there is a loss. It's a company. That's all we can tell you. We'll have more, uh, once we can research this further. That was back in November or approaching a year, and all the state has told us is yes, we're aware of it, should have some answers by the end of the year. The end of this year, almost, almost fourteen, fifteen months later. Now, imagine that with our sales tax. Sales tax, we're in the same, but we have no idea where that money comes from, and it's so much larger. And that's forty-five percent of your revenue. Imagine any other business in this world that operate not knowing where forty-five percent of your revenue comes from. We have a very high level, ten, top ten categories of where this revenue source comes from, but there are other states within the Midwest the municipalities truly allow, uh, truly understand where their revenue is coming from can compensate and understand if it's a construction project, if it's truly economics uh, locally that are, that are causing increases, decreases. Certain areas such as the downtown or university district are seeing large increases. Then maybe you can attribute some of that success to those individuals that are blowing that board. We don't have any such measurements or abilities here in South Dakota. And so it is being pushed by the league, not too hard, uh, only because there's just not enough staff there in, in, in the um, the state from what we understand. But ideally, it would be something that I would love to see. I know it frustrates me. I know our staff has to hear my frustration. Uh, but more importantly, it's difficult to, to budget projections for US City Council. And then, of course, you're looking to fund our, our, our services, but also outside agents as well, and that makes it all also difficult as well.
Councilmember Durney.
Thank you. Um, okay, I've got one more question, just for public clarification on slide twenty-one. Jake, you mentioned that the um, airport and golf course are amenities that we subsidize. Is it fairly common for cities to have um, to subsidize those amenities so we can have those high-quality things in our town?
Yes, it's very common to subsidize uh, the golf course, the pool, as well as the airport. Um, the golf course actually uh, turned a revenue uh, last year, directly turned revenue this year. It's getting a lot of play. It still does require a small subsidy. Um, it does not pay for capital improvements out there, in which you'll see a large capital investment here next year for water. It's needed out there at that facility. Therefore, it is one, though, that requires a lot more subsidy than, than you'll see in most communities. And that's because we do have SDSU using it predominantly. I believe they're about forty-five percent of the overall usage out there. Um, but the amount of revenue that we receive from them is very minimal. And so that does require by subsidy, and that, that subsidy comes from the solid waste fund of which we're hoping to reduce overall in time, uh, so that we can provide more environmental amenities out there at the solid waste facility and ensure that we're viable out there as well.
Thank you. I just like that reminder of how we can have those amenities in town and the cost associated.
Yeah, the, the golf course actually receives a, a transfer from the liquor store. And so um, the liquor store and, and of course, you being diversified in revenues allows us to do things like the pool, like the golf course went there.
Councilmember Rasmussen or Avery, do you have any questions?
No. I guess I just have a historical question, maybe on the outside agency funding. Can I get like a little history lesson on the school funding? Uh, I understand that's kind of a unique situation and kind of what that money goes to and why we fund that, I guess.
Yeah, so we are the only city in the state of South Dakota that provides funding to our schools, even though many cities have their own electric departments. Back in the early, late eighties, um, there was uh, desire and, and understanding that um, taxes would be generally paid by utilities for electric uh, to a school system. And so therefore, an understanding was made that we would fund a school system through B M U. Uh, so that's part of that transfer. Uh, but that since went away about two years after uh, that resolution was put into place. So it's no longer a viable argument. Um, but we have since continued to fund that at about a hundred ninety-five to two hundred thousand dollars. Now, over the last two or three years, the school system has committed that towards uh, programming. I believe it's for busing and then early childhood uh, development as well. I might be a little off there. And so it's going towards great programs within the school system.
Junior kindergarten.
There we go, junior kindergarten. So with that, um, if there's no other questions, what I do have as direction potentially from council, assuming I seen heads nodding here, is looking to have a conversation with B M U about that reduction in transfer of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, then also looking at digital late fee at five thousand to five percent for those individuals who witnessed uh, the, the policy requirements held by council for funding outside agencies. And then uh, if assuming the Humane Society is approved at fifty thousand dollars, when that agreement comes back to city council in, I believe it's in December, we'll be at metrics versus um, um, uh, I can't think of the word, formula, I think, formula literally. Uh, if those are, are a majority of, of the, the thoughts here from council, I just looking for a knot of heads. Um, I'm gonna move forward with that.
Okay, is that?
I have a clear question with that. What does last to the late fee in the contract? Will we implement those, this funding cycle or just have the discussion and then implement the next budget session?
So uh, you don't do anything tonight, uh, but once you approve the budget, I believe it's in November is, is the timeframe that we're looking at, then that would go into effect for the twenty twenty-four set uh, that year, for your twenty twenty-four budget.
So those two conversations would impact the, the numbers that we're looking at tonight? Okay.
And at the next budget work session, I can let you know what that means financially.